Sort of a, perhaps some sort of outline of an action plan of what the next steps are?
I may wait. I think that, in the, I mean, that's, that's, that's fine, but I think that what we want to look at in looking at a broader view is, is all of these systems and what is it that the county could provide as an alternative for towns. Whatever the system that might be the most favored could be incorporated and, and that, then that service could be, I mean, how would we offer that service to these towns? A lot of them will look at this and say, well, we don't really need this right now. Some people are over capacity, but they may wait until, you know, people are ready to leave that position and that sort of thing. So I can see that once we decide if we're going to do this and what that service is, other towns would be coming in on that. And it's really not going to make a difference if they're part of that system or not.
Well, I was gonna say, I think it's also partly the feasibility study that's gonna help you identify whether there's one approach where, you know, here we are, sign up, we're doing the assessing from soup to nuts, or whether there's a level, kind of almost a menu approach where the town can choose, you know, Level A, which is just a basic something or other, Level B, which is much more intensive, or Level C, which is here we turn basic in the whole operation over to the central office. So, and I think that's partly something that the feasibility study needs to address. And it also suggests maybe, you know, how much interest is out there in terms of the towns at any level.
Paul?
I think Mark's on the right track. My, being at the meeting, the request from the towns is very general in nature. I think their finding is that they've got capacity that they need in some of these, they're walking in and people aren't as busy as they need to be. And partly because some of the software improvements make the job less intensive. And they feel the towns, a lot of towns feel that to be consultant, the software consultant provides the software into the town. And so it was a general question as to whether we could take a look, I think, county-wise, at a lot of these issues. How much, how many towns like they have additional capacity might be interested? And there is a menu of services. We went to the regionalization conference at Holy Cross, you know, Eastern Connecticut, I think they're, and they had regionalized the appeals process. So it's a big net, I think, they're cast to see if they can, from the commission's perspective, what we don't, it's very difficult to form assessment data from the towns. And it's a treasure of information that would make them competitive as a region, if we had the information collected uniformly and we could use it to process that.
It's, it's also cyclical in the assessor's office, because, you know, there are certain times of the year when they have to get the information ready to set the tax rate. And then it's cyclical, once that's set, then you have the abatements, the people come in and file abatements because they're, think they're taxes too high, they want to assess properly. So some of it's cyclical. In the interim, they do a lot of audits. And depending on the staff they have, they can do a lot of research.
Yes.
And which can be very helpful to other departments in town. And into, particularly, because there's a lot of information on those assessor records.
The multi-hazard mitigation plan, what we're doing as layers to be right there, the assessed value of the properties that are in the hazard zones. And we can't do that, which is absolutely impossible for us to do that kind of information. But what I also heard from the towns was, this is gonna, this is, this capacity and the sort of structural deficits that the towns are facing are hitting the small first, for sure. But they're gonna, it's gonna, everybody's feel this going in the future. And I also heard that, given the age of the employees involved in the towns now, if we were to come up with something by a trick, you may get a county-wide service to opt into as the target ones that get up and rise.
I think we need to go off, I'm, we need to get off there.
I'm gonna suggest that, I'm gonna, one of the, one of the issues for transition of any services is to illustrate how we can support confidence for that transition. Since we hadn't been in the assessing before, then we have to, whatever point we come up with, we have the quality to deliver that, to get something, you know, consolidating, we have the...
With centralized storage for the things that are being centrally stored now, make sure that our backup, our enterprise backup is solid enough to take care of data wherever it is. Because I totally believe that that's, that's the first thing we need to, we need to attack and get over as soon as possible, is that whether Cape Cod Commission stores their data somewhat on hard servers and somewhat on desktops, we need to capture and back up that data no matter where it is. So, and that's what we're moving toward now. And then, give it a year, you can kind of see then the growth potential, and then say, okay, now we can procedurally, from a central, centrally managed, okay, now we're gonna migrate everybody to central storage.
The problem, to me, is that we have, we have a need of training the people that are using these devices to get in the habit of doing what we want in order to, in order to provide the security and the storage of this data. And it bothers me that, you know, that that, you know, that we're willing to support past bad behavior by, you know, by saying we're gonna, you know, we'll support what they're doing now.
If I, if I may, I, I'm not sure, you know, I can't speak to the practices of, of any of the employees and what they do and what they don't do. And, and I hear what you're saying is that in some ways, IT has been underfunded, and I agree. I think that our IT department does need a lot, a concentrated effort. And we are probably, that's probably our weakest link. Having said all of this and advocating for going forward and that your team can do these things, this has been a bad year. And there has been many days lost of productivity. And in some ways, it's almost like throwing money at a house that is a money pit, and it's never really going to be fixed all at once. And so I'm, I'm, I appreciate your arguments, I'm reserving judgment for, for the other report here, but
Right.
I do see that sometimes you can take on more than, even though you feel you're capable of it, it is such an enormous old structure that you're trying to repair piece by piece, that we're, we've lost productivity and, and there's future losses in the future that could happen, so.
Right. I, I think we need to address part of that with, with the reorganization that I'm talking about, which, you know, I'm recommending that, you know, we look to doing ASAP.
John, if I could just make a comment for a minute, I think I'm holding off too, only because I know that you are in a situation now that needs improvement.
Right.
And this budget reflects some improvements.
Mm-hmm.
But not all the improvements that, that I think you need to make or want to make.
That's definitely, that is definitely true.
So I'm waiting to hear Peter's report, because I think we need to see where we are today.
Yes.
Where you want to be this coming year and what it's gonna do, what kinds of problems it will solve, what kinds of advancements it will make for you. And then, how do we need to get to where we ought to be? And in a phased-in approach in terms of financial planning for it, or?
Absolutely.
Or whatever.
And what do we need now, and what do we need?
Right.
I think we should go through.
And quite, and quite honestly, that would be my response to Bill's question, too. While he's absolutely right, you're absolutely right. We can't take on all of that at once. And I do think, for the most part, Peter's prioritization of how we would implement a plan is the way to go. And much of that is actually, I wouldn't say I've been able to budget everything to mimic his report, but I would say I've reworked parts of my budget to mimic his report. And I think this structure does an awful lot to implement his, his, his recommendations. So maybe I'm not there in explaining that to you yet.
Oh, I, okay. And also, I just wanna also note that we have a major user of your services in the room as well. And I'm sure that he has some, some goals that he needs to reach that are directly related to where you're gonna go.
Absolutely.
I think there's, there's two here, so it would be interesting to hear their needs.
Yeah. So basically, in terms of line items, the, the new line item, basically, telephones is basically looking for the cell phones that we have all discussed, so that IT response time can basically increase by basically having staff available wherever they are on the county campus, on the main campus, or out at the satellites, basically providing everybody with cell phones in order to, you know, basically, emergency response. Because there's only a finite number of us, and an emergency will happen in the registry of deeds, and we're over in First District on something that's considered there to be an emergency, but, you know, so we, we need some, we need some better communication tools and cell phones are one of those. Mark, did you get a chance to distribute, because I would like to kind of briefly go into this now, a little?
No.
Okay. If I can?
Are you gonna, you can move back to your line items?
Uh, well, do you have a?
Yes.
Okay, you have a question?
I think you should finish with those. Telephone system, which, actually confused me a little bit, because on the backup page, it says something a little bit different, so I'm confused. So you had 10,200 telephones, then major software systems?
Oh, you're right, I, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I actually skipped over on that entire list. All right. So basically, let me go over the, the three capital requests. Telephone system, that's very straightforward. We're looking to bring a couple of conference phones in here. We, there are only two conference phones on the entire campus. There's one at the Cape Cod Commission, and there's one that's just been purchased for Cape Life Compact. They basically, you know, like the old conference phones, allow you to be able to put a conference phone, in phone, in the room, and have multiple people being able to hear and contribute in the conversations. And they'd be dialing numbers, basically.
Dialers.
Exactly. So we're looking to try to get two more of those next year. The Resource Development Office had one in the old phone system, I'm looking to replace that. And I'm basically looking to set up one as a loaner. My understanding is that facilities used to have an extra one that they would loan out, so we're looking to duplicate that same piece, basically.
These would facilitate the open meeting law change on July 1st. You would then be able to participate by phone, much better, because these are a higher quality phone.
Yes, absolutely. Yes. And the other part of this request is to outfit, purchase enough phones to outfit Children's Cove and the Fire Training Academy and put them on our phone system. And therefore, facilities would not have to maintain separate, increasingly archaic phone systems for those two departments.
Just as a question, one of the things that happens when electronic phones die is that a local phone line might be putting on 30 volts, those phones don't work. What do, what do we do in the case of, let's say, a major outage of, of power?
Yep. Well, again, all of the, the phones are powered over the network. So as long as the switches the phones are connected to have battery backup, and those phones will continue to work. Now, where we may have some issues is making sure we keep our UPS load so that the battery backups work. But the phones will work. Then in terms of our infrastructure, we've been looking at what else could keep the phones from falling down. For instance, there is a device that actually, its sole purpose is to simply route calls along our network. Well, despite the fact that the vendor, you know, gave us a router and set it up, we thought that was a potential source of problems. So we purchased an additional router, and we will be configuring that. So basically, if a, if a routing problem internally happens on our network, we'll have another router that we can basically just slide in, plug everything back in. And if that one device fails, it's not a fail, failover for the entire network, basically. So we're looking, we're still analyzing the system, we always are looking at all our systems, to see what redundancies, redundancies we can identify and put in place, so that when outages do, do occur, we can absolutely minimize them to the, I mean, because we know, in the best of systems, things fail. So building as many redundancies as possible is, is what we're doing. Centrally, the, all of the phone equipment, the centralized servers and stuff, are on generator up in the server room. There's, with, now that the jail, the old jail is basically vacant, they have the majority of what that generator serves. So the electrician basically said we shouldn't have any problems with the generator not being able to supply, and this was a conversation we had about a week or two ago, not being able to supply enough backup power if for some reason we exhaust our UPS power with the centralized resources.
Do you run a test?
Uh, to the, we run tests on things we can. Testing the generator and the ability to back up on that is something that really is predominantly facilities and I have to try to get them to scale. We definitely need to do that, absolutely. So, okay.
Are you, are you on wide area network?
No, I was gonna just briefly do major software systems first, because that's pretty straightforward. Basically, one of Peter's recommendations is centralizing enterprise backup. We basically are at the point where we've already decided on the platform and the software to do that. And it's, we, what we're also doing at the same time is standardizing. There were several different backup systems in place that we inherited from various county networks. So we basically have done our own assessment in-house, found the one that meets our needs the best. And, and because of that, the 3200 is basically an upgrade to that system, so it's today's version. And the $6,000 request is really, that part of the major software is the help desk. It is additions to the help desk software along three, three areas. One, in November, I did a presentation on the help desk software to county departments. And there were several, well, can we do this, can we do that, kinds of questions. And they were all, they were all pretty good questions, that are outside the scope of what the particular level of help desk software that we bought could do. One, part of this $6,000 would go to upgrade the level of the software so that we can respond to those, those requests, which I thought were really good. The way that the software works right now, our help desk software, if three people have the same support request, they have to enter individual tickets. And once we do this upgrade, that won't have to be the case. We can basically use one ticket to handle a fact that three people are having the same problem. We can also build, Mark, a workflow, very similar to what's in Munis. So if, for instance, in the health lab, the health lab director wanted to see or, or be included in the dialogue on all tickets for people in his department, with this upgrade, we could design a workflow that would allow that to happen. In the present version of the help desk, that doesn't. The rest of the part of this request, number one, we've taken on about 100, 150 additional users, meaning those state folks in these three courthouses that have our phone system. And it's become, there is some support, no question, involved in doing that. And it would be tremendously helpful if we could actually expand our help desk system so that we could have, we can track those users individually. Right now, we're just basically having to lump them in a, in something that says state phone user, which doesn't really help us, you know, in order to be able to prioritize whether Scott Nicholson has a problem, or whether, whether one of his clerks has a problem, which would be gratefully, gratefully beneficial. And we also have pretty much exhausted the number of computers that we can track with this system. So I'm looking to increase that number by 100 as well, so that we have the flexibility to handle, to better handle our computer load. So that's kind of why that number is so high. It's expanding the number of users, it's expanding the number of computers, and looking to buy into a higher level of the software that will give us some more of the functionality, basically, department heads have already requested.
Okay. Then we've rested, no, there's wide areas that?
Oh, we have, oh, we're not there yet.
Yeah, there is, there is wide area network, yep. The first, now, this is the area, unfortunately, that, for you folks, if you've looked at the detail behind it, I've reworked a lot of this. And the primary reason why I've reworked this is to try to include, within my original funding request, as much of a response to Peter Carlson's report as I possibly can. And in order to do that, I have basically, I need to look at the right paper here. I basically zeroed out anything involved with the IT training and conference room. It's a really nice idea if we could eventually get space in the old jail of DCI building or something, to create a computer-based conference room, basically available. This is, this is something that actually, at least three different departments have come to me, people within those departments, they'd be a lot of use for it. But, I mean, it just pales in comparison to what we're trying to do here. So that's one of those things that basically, I've said, you know, while it's great to talk about it, let's table it for another year. I've also reduced the amount of switching in my request. And what I've done is I've replaced those requests with things that respond to Peter's suggestions for how we should do it.
So you have a new list?
Hmm?
So you have a new list?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if it's a scheduling or a capacity issue, but all of these are found in the Cape Cod Commission conference room. Is it a, you know, I don't think it's used 24 hours a day.
No, it's not, this would be something, this would be something different. While there's a smart board in there, the smart boards are wonderful, and I would suggest that that would be part of what would be set up in the training room. But this really would be a, this really would be a conference room that would have, that would have computers set up in table style in it all along. If you remember, Mark, when we looked at, when we looked at space for the Cape Cod Commission, we saw a lot of the places really have these, these training rooms, pretty much all set up. With, what we would do to reduce cost in doing it is basically fill it with older computers to start with, you know, computers that still have some life in them, but departments couldn't use. And, you know, kind of jury grade it, because of course it gets expensive if I'm talking about buying 15 or 20 computers. We wouldn't be able to pull that off in a year. However, in terms of GIS trainings, in terms of health department trainings, they basically could find a lot of different uses for basically having computers set up with internet access. I talked with the health department, you know, they, they ship their volunteers out to 4Cs quite a bit in order to take tests to get certified as volunteers. And that was one particular use of it that was brought up.
So are you suggesting that instead of, say, a smart board that a group of people could learn from, to have a training session off of, that instead of having something like that, that they would have each a computer and work off that computer during the training session? Is that what you're suggesting?
No, I'm saying that, I'm saying that they'd all be part of the way this training room would be set up. You know, there also are tools that you can use, you can hook into individual computers and have interactivity with the smart board, too, which are, which are pretty neat. So you could actually run trainings off the smart board and have people interact with it without necessarily having to get a, it's, it's kind of a little difficult to, you know, just talk about without a demonstration. But yeah, I mean, I, I've seen these, I've seen these sort of things work in a lot of places. And I definitely think, I think it also could be used, another way the training room could basically be used is, there's any time that I have to do any training, software, hardware, whatever it happens to be, we have to go somewhere and set up. And the ideal way is, is not necessarily to set up with a smart board, that, but people can actually sit at a computer, mimic what we're doing, and actually learn on the fly, as if they were taking a computer training course. And that's, that's the kind of environment I'd like to be able to create, too.
Okay, I guess that's good.
Yeah. So basically, I've zeroed that out, basically.
But you've zeroed it out?
Yep.
We need to get copies of the new list to the commission.
Yes, because this just happened, you know. So basically, I have about $13,000 there in switching. Those basically are spare switches, Mark. What we can't afford to do is get into a spot where we don't have a spare switch that could, that could, we could plop in with an hour or two of programming, so that, because these switches are gonna fail. What we learned the hard way this year, we had two, two switches fail for different reasons. One of them, I believe, had to do with that lightning strike. The other one was caused undetermined, basically. When these switches go down, for that segment of the network, that segment of that building, again, they lose connectivity to anything but their local desktop, no internet access, no server access, and because of these types of switches, no phone access. So we can't afford to have that situation happen again. So, exactly. So what I'm asking for here is basically two switches that we keep in our inventory. All we have to do is take it off our shelf, an hour program it, pop it in, and that's, that's the extent of the downtime.
Okay.
And we have a very strong request from our folks at the sheriff's department to get that part of our fiber network which exists in their electronic control room down there, out of there, to a different part of the DCI building, which if we have the funding to do, I'm more than happy to do. We don't want to be in there either. That was the only place, when we needed to create this, this fiber ring, that was the only place in the building that we could put it, because of entrance and egress to that, to that building at the time. We didn't have access to anything else. Now, the county owns the rest of that building, basically, except for that room. And we can put it in an appropriate location that doesn't upset any, any open cave, you know, issues, and kind of gets the sheriff to be a little happier with us. And about $15,000 worth of this request is, is additional hardware, following up on, trying to take what we have for backup capacity now and take it all the way up to where Peter's suggesting we should have it. And then I've reworked roughly, oh, about $7,000, well, I would say more than, probably about $15,000, to address the other security issues that Peter points out with, with the DMZ, and basically setting up the DMZ. And that is what is in the wide area network. It is, at this point, kind of, sort of a catch-all.
So how much, what did it stay the same?
It stayed exactly the same. Now, I kept the number the same for the purposes of this discussion. Do I think it meets everything that's in Peter's report? No.
Okay. All right. So I think we should go to Peter's report.
I'd like, if I can have a few more minutes.
Oh, yeah.
I think there's another, there's another really important piece to this that we haven't discussed that does dovetail it, and at least Peter and I have discussed. And that, and we talked about it in, in the broad range, but in terms of if we're gonna implement this report, what kind of staffing structure do we really need? And so basically, I have, I have a draft for you that I'd like to distribute and take five minutes to go over with you, if I can.
You have that on your tour, because you have three new staff.
Yeah, that would be great.
Really briefly, we've got an organizational chart with people and job titles in the upper left. In the lower left, we have how the support function is currently distributed. Basically, the four IT staff people are all doing general support right now. Catch is catch can, you know, anybody's liable to take anything that comes on the, the plate, basically. What we have done is, there is a request for three additional staff people in my budget. And I have plotted them out here. As, as I referenced before, I'm suggesting that basically every job description is already outdated from where Mark and I set up the department until today. And that they would all change. And with it, we'd be adding in three staff members, two help desk project specialists, and an IT assistant. Now, when you look briefly down at the bottom, you, the bottom right-hand corner, you see the two present staff who would become help desk project support specialists, Chris Burton, Paul Ramos, and you see the two additional. And they are all linked together, because those would be the four people providing support. Then you see the other positions. The way, the reason I'm proposing this is kind of this. In order to make this work, one of the things that Bill and Sheila have been discussing is that we need to be more proactive, we need to make sure that there are, potential outages are better addressed. In addition, one of the things that Peter is extremely strong on addressing is that my job strategically changed to something that is entirely management, management of departments' expectations, and you certainly can go to that much better than I can. And in order to do that, I need to come out of the support role. And what I'm basically pleading with you folks is, in order to do this, I need to take the network administrator out of the support role. There is, there's absolutely enough hardware and infrastructure stuff going on, and it changes all the time. You know, we have occupying the new jail, the old jail, right now, and that there never seems to be these things, that we, I need to take the, the network administrator out of the support role as well. And so one of the reasons- And so one of the reasons that I'm requesting one of these help desk project support specialists is to replace the support time that Billy and I are doing. And I, I don't see that as adding a great deal. I see it adding a little in additional support hours to the department, but I basically see it as making up for what needs to happen in order to make our systems function. And that's irregardless of whether we have the web host because we have all these other systems in here too. Phone and, and network things, there just are quite a bit. We see in the, in Peter's proposal, we've got, you know, 20-something servers at the present time and we've got that many different networks with different security needs. And that's not going to change. Even if we have 15 servers, we're still going to have nine different networks with nine different security needs. In addition to that, basically, I'm asking for an IT assistant because as, as the program has grown, I'm doing all the clerical stuff. And that, that pretty much, you know, can't continue. I have another reason among many, Sheila, that this has been absolutely horrible year is because I've had plenty of horrible experiences with vendors. I've been lucky up until now. And there's, there's absolutely, that's absolutely impacted all of the things that are not working well. I don't intend to necessarily use the primary vendor I used this year anymore because I, we need better response from our backup support. However, I certainly need more help on, on the phone yelling down these people. I have a pretty broad job description for an IT assistant already set up. And I'm looking for them actually to also help on the help desk. What I'd like to do on the help desk is get to 100% call coverage. And that phone rings, somebody always picks it up. So when the support specialists are out in the field doing something, that person still gets a call. So if it really is an emergency, you know, it gets treated as such from the very beginning. The only, there is a request for one more help desk and support specialist in here. Normally, I would not have put this in, but unfortunately, what I am 99% sure is going to happen this year is we are going to have to serve approximately 100 more users than we're serving now. Now, that, who that's going to be is that's going to be, we're going to take what we're doing with the FIRE Training Academy, those five users and 10 computers up a level so that they're going to get the same level of support as all the other departments because they basically don't yet. They don't have a full network. As a result of the statewide law on protecting personal security, I conducted a security assessment of all the network software and applications in the county and provided Mark with an outline of where the, where the problems are. We are out of compliance in several, in several areas. And one of those areas is in the registry of deeds. And I have had two meetings already, one with Dave Murphy where I basically outlined for him where they are out of compliance and why. Because they don't track personal information. But the problem is, is we do. We do here in finance, we do in several other places. And when we created this wide area network, this is, while we have security boundaries, those work for the, those work for the people who adhere to them, not for the hackers and the people intent on breaking your security. So what we have in the registry of deeds is basically a network that does not meet the, the standards of the law at this point in time. And they have asked me after reviewing it to put together a written proposal which they will take to their consultant. And, you know, I know what's going to say there and I'm 95% sure that I know what he's going to say. Yes, all these things need to be done. I can't do it for them and it's going to come back, it's basically going to come back to us. Now normally, if this wasn't, if this was any other department, that's absolutely where it should be anyway. You don't necessarily want to have seven or eight networks managed internally and then ask your same IT department to have to deal with a consultant to manage the ninth when you're talking the same things. You're talking about antivirus, you're talking about making sure that the computers are patched properly and you're talking that you have network security. So, I mean, they're all the things that we already do and they're not really being done in the registry of deeds. So.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Now we want to move to the other.
Before you start, I have a 30 seconds.
I went afterwards, but this, the staffing issue that John has, the administrative help is, he doesn't have time to write policies. And when you're running around putting out fires, you can't write the fire code. So it's, it's, it's something that's just, it's a constant battle again. It goes back to the same issue of sort of separating, you know, the duties. You guys can stop me anytime, you know, I feel free. And I know you probably have questions.
I think once you get, once you get into.
Okay. So just quickly how we did, and this is kind of a snapshot of the methodology. We obviously looked, we spent some time with John and his team. We went around to each of the different departments, asked them a series of standardized questions and then specifically around their needs and what type of operations they're doing today. How do they see their operations changing in the future? And we've got, you know, it was an unbelievable diversity of users and applications. So, and then of course, you know, we had that as our sort of starting point. And then what we do is we take all that information back, we look at best practices information, we look at what the vendors are saying, what the industry is saying and what similar organizations are saying and say, you know, that matches, some things match and some things don't. And then look at the goals that people have said what we want over the next few years and then lay out the planets. Some of the themes and, you know, this is kind of, some of this is a little raw in the sense that the phrases that are used, but I think that it's, there was a certain theme that went through a lot of conversations. You know, communications was a big issue. Again, gets back to the fire code firefighting issue. It's hard to be the PR officer to say why the fire's happening while you're handling the hose. So, sorry.
Peter, one of the things that bothers me when, you know, at this part, one of the questions that was asked on setting priorities, I've always been concerned that IT as a support function shouldn't be setting the priorities as much as the policy within a department.
Yeah, I'm not recommending they set priorities. I'm saying they are actually listening to their proficiency to set what business priorities, you have to look at it as a business. What business priorities are important to them? How does the IT department meet those business priorities with technology?
Then the question is, how well are those departments communicating that information to IT?
You're setting me up perfectly. So the reason why the IT working group is exactly why that communication is, is an ongoing communication. It's not a once-a-year conversation. It's, you know, at least monthly. And if you're really, everything's working well, it's quarterly. And it's, it's not a giant complaint session. It is, it is open, frank and constructive and not, you know, he said, she said. It has to be, it has to be an ongoing dialogue. And here's our priority, here's where we're going. Thing is, if you have a conversation with John once a year about it, you know, he has 12 other, a million other conversations every year about that. So you have to open up those lines. So.
May I ask you a question? So is this, this falls into the recommendation of having your, your working group is sort of the committee to,
To address some of these.
To be looking at, to be looking at what is necessary, what is needed by the overall majority and how do we get this?
Yeah, and some of the, some of the themes were really around the conversations we had with people. And some of our key recommendations are meeting some of these themes. Not all of them because you can't, you can't just point to one conversation and say, well, this person said this one thing. These are one or more people have said.
General themes going through the whole conversation.
Right, 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 right. And, you know, this whole, people have empathy for John's department. There is no shortage of empathy, you know, they're doing the best they can, they're understaffed. And the reason why they have empathy is they see these guys running around. It's not like they're sitting there all day with their feet on the desk. I mean, they're running around, they're trying to fix problems. And, you know, the, the general, the general consensus is that they're overwhelmed in the sense that there's just too many tasks on the plate. And where that comes from is, is, you know, seeing the folks running around. That leads into theme number three, which is the service delivery issues. When you ask, you know, for a request and, you know, if it came back in two seconds or two months, it depends on who you are, where you are and when you caught them sort of running by. Now, one of the caveats I have to say is, as we were going through this process, you know, John was actually, you know, it's kind of building the plane and flying at the same time. And he's like fixing things as we're going along. So, I mean, one of the big things is the, is the ticket system that was introduced in the fall. That is tremendous. I mean, that is, you know, not that it's going to wipe out everything, but that goes to the crux of the problem is an organized way of hearing the requests, answering the requests and then measuring the response of the request, which is, you know, that is basically, you know, that's IT 101. And now it just, it's implemented now. And the thing is, the big piece of that is the communication. Because it's not only, and I think you've already pointed this out, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, feedback mechanism?
Right, yes.
So the communication, because one of the complaints that we got and one of the things that leads up to this comment about communications is, we heard that, I put the request in, I never heard anything. Okay, so how do you fix that? Put a great system in, a great system that communicates every time you touch it. So, you know, if, if one of the guys grabs the ticket, works on it for two seconds one day, it sends an email saying, hey, your ticket's been updated. Or it's been, you know, somebody's working on it. It's been assigned, it's, you know, it's moving through the process. It's not like a black hole. So that opens up the communication lines. So, the fourth theme, which, you know, and, you know, I think, you know, as we pointed out earlier, two big users of IT services, Cape Light Compact and Cape Cod Commission. And we heard this from other departments, that the IT department can't handle big projects. So we dig into this theme, we say, okay, now why is that? Well, because they're doing other things. And this gets back to, well, they had some big infrastructure projects on their plate and things like, you know, shoring up the network and, and, you know, making sure that everything is centralized. Those are big, the home system, those are big projects. It takes, you know, you know, hundreds of man-hours to actually put that together. So when you lump something else on it, like a giant CRM project or a data project or a whatever kind of project, it's, it's too many, it's, the term I use is thrashing. It's a computer term, but it really means that you're trying to serve too many people at the same time. The computer's not doing anything good. It's essentially just spinning. So that is a pretty, a pretty widely held belief that they can't handle big projects. And then, you know, from a, you know, unscientific, perhaps definitely unscientific poll that we took from people about what the overall support was, you know, they were scoring around five out of 10, which is not great, but, you know, as I point out later, it's kind of a snapshot in time and getting better. So I think that, you know, people do see changes and when they do see changes, their opinion changes very quickly. That's actually a great thing. The, one thing that was a little bit troubling is this theme number seven, which is that when you have lack of confidence in an organization, you take it on to, it's kind of the, no sheriff in town, therefore I'll, I'll be the sheriff. That kind of stuff leads to where you work five years. Everybody doing their own thing, consultants coming in, you know, it's, you know, fixing this, fixing that and, and, you know, one department does the one thing, one department does the other. From a, from a IT centralization standpoint, nothing erodes that faster than that, that theme. And that's, that's just a, that's a slippery slope. So we're trying to basically alleviate those kinds of things. From a maturity curve standpoint, I think these guys, like I said, it's definitely on the upswing. I mean, if you look back five years, not in a great situation.
Just to curate me, that's like a drop of blood.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, that's what it's, it's kind of going the right way though.
You have a great, you know, great learning curve. It's really, you know, it's really accelerated.
Literally, I'm, I'm giving these guys praise with praises. I mean, three years is not a lot of time to do a lot of this infrastructure stuff. So, you know, as, as critical as people can be, because, you know, if you don't, if you don't give them their hot coffee, it's, my coffee wasn't hot. It's, it's, it's one of those things. So you have to look at this as phase one. And I look at it as, this is a big, giant phase one. It was a big bite to take off. And the, if you say, well, look, now we can build other things out. Because one of the conversations that Maggie and I had early in the process was, you know, can our infrastructure handle a lot of what we're doing? And the, the short answer is, yeah, it can because a lot of the work that has been done is not, you know, you're not putting this stuff together with, you know, stuff you buy at Staples. I mean, this is, you know, a lot of, in a lot of cases, this is world-class gear. So, you know, that's the good stuff. The, one of the things that we, you know, we talked about already, the larger projects, it's, you have to, we have to solve this problem. You have to be able to do big projects or come up with a methodology for doing big projects. And then also, to go back to what we were saying earlier, be a great support organization. You have to be able to deliver great support. And just listening to John's budget thing about, you know, response times and cell phones and things like that, those are things that are going to get you great support because to be able to get ahold of people, you know, you call in, phone gets answered. Doesn't go to voicemail, doesn't go into a box somewhere. And then, like I alluded to, the security issues, you know, I feel pretty strongly about some of these security issues. I'm not going to get into the compliance issue because John already is already on the path to mitigate those issues. So it wasn't even time, it wasn't worth spending time on the compliance, the privacy stuff. But, and then talk about the amount of software, the specialized software. This is one thing that, I don't, I don't see it as a bad problem, but I see it as a, I see it as an issue to be managed, which is, Department X says, I need a software application to do this, whatever it is, to manage the keys or, you know, to manage, you know, whatever it is. And every department has its own example. And, you know, I think the Cape Cod Commission is the perfect example of a big giant data problem to handle. I mean, that is, yes.
Is that a policy decision to make sure that the specialized software purchases don't end up in a proprietary, you're stuck with this vendor for all your upgrades?
Not necessarily. Because most software that you contract out for is built in proprietary libraries. Just a fact plus. And then, you know, most of it is not open source. When you're talking about stuff that runs inside of your network. The compliance piece of this is the, how can the IT department embrace and manage third-party applications? So software, if you get a software developer, local folk, you know, basically gets a piece of software, develops it for the county, gives it to the county, hopefully there's licensing in there. And then when you add that piece of software, the IT department knows what it is, what it runs on, what its security concerns are, has it tested in an environment that looks like the county's network. You know, a lot of, I would call them lone gunman software developers, you know, they do it at home, develop their stuff, they plug it on the network and all of a sudden, people can't get their access to their files, whatever it is. You know, it's, it's one of those things where you have to just be able to run it through a process. So, and I say this later on, but where does the call go when somebody can't get access to the thing? It goes to John's department. John's department says, I have no idea what you're talking about. I don't know about that piece of software. And, you know, that's unfair. That's, that's, you know, that's like, you know, putting, you know, a piece of equipment on the desk like a teleconfer. And everybody trying to figure out how to use it. It's not fair to the users.
So there are different departments that have different software needs, such as the GIS or whatever, maybe the Cape Light Compact might have, or, you know, analyzing energy audits or whatever it is.
Managing all kinds of funky data, whatever it is, you know, healthy.
So those are two different support, those are two different software systems. They really have nothing to do with each other or can there be a software system that, that can be an umbrella software system that people can then take from it what it is they need?
Yeah, there is some of that. There is economies of scale and also consolidation of efforts. And I think Paul's team is a really good example of. They, they developed a blueprint for a, in terms of virtual data center. It was a term that I saw in, what I would call that is really a data warehouse and then a bunch of applications that are built, that are meant to work together, but essentially they're managing a collection of data that is, that's, that's managed by the commission. So that's, that's a good example of. And there are some other economies of scale where you can actually manage, you'll see a couple slides. I'll talk about this in a second, but the, the notion of customer management, customer relationship management, a lot of departments, there's a couple of different versions of it.
I read that too.
Yeah, and you can say, well, gee, I saw that term like three other times and, okay, can we subscribe or can we buy a piece of software that can help us do that? And here's a better question, are those the same customers?
Are they the same customers or are they same needs of the customers in general?
Right, right. And actually, that's, that's a separate, I have to slice that off. That's, that's a separate conversation. And then, you know, I'll talk about why this is not so good, but, you know, if, from a, from a best practice standpoint, you wouldn't leave this building with the front door unlocked at night. And that is my kind of, my feeling about leaving web servers open on a, web servers and FTP servers, any internet accessible servers on a corporate network. That's, that's what I'm talking about when I talk about that line. And we'll talk specifically about what I mean by that. But, and then obviously this, you know, John's already brought up the legacy servers. These guys got saddled with. It's eye-opening, because you'll see three years' worth of work piled into a room that there's not enough space to walk in there. Because these guys basically went around and said, I'll take that department server and I'll centralize it. I'll take that department server and put it up here. Problem is, now you've got 18 boxes sitting up there. And it's, you know, if you started from a blank sheet of paper today, you wouldn't do it the same way. But I think it's a, it's a way of, it's getting the job done, so.
Peter, and just listening to you so far, I mean, there are so many policy implications here.
Yes.
I mean, being a department head, if you wanted to acquire a certain piece of software, you know what your needs are, but then you need to contact IT and say, this is what I'm looking at. This is the kind of data I want to manage. These are the other people who might use some of this data. So, IT would have to sort of approve that, or at least from the point of view that it works for you, but, but you don't want to be entering the data three different times and it has to be able to be compatible. I mean, all these policy implications are huge in here.
Exactly. And that's one of the reasons why I'm recommending John's role change. Because there's no way, again, fire code firefighting, can't do the same thing. And it's, it's impossible for one person to do that, but what it does is, again, if you have a working group that's looking at sort of county-wide IT issues, that's the kind of conversation you have. Paul comes to the meeting or one of those days, and he kind of, or Meg comes to the meeting and says, look, you know, this is what we're thinking about doing. And all of a sudden, the other person from another department said, you know, I've got the same exact business problem. We're talking about buying the same exact piece of software. Maybe we can go to the vendor and beat them up for a better price. You know, that kind of conversation needs to happen at a, at a working group level. It can't be all centralized through, you know, John's brain. That doesn't make any sense. But, pattern matching, absolutely. John will do a good job of pattern matching. And that is one of the chief goals that, that should be on his agenda, is saying, how do I pattern match against requirements, requirements, requirements? And I'll talk a bit, a bit about more the project management methodology. There's a, that can be managed also at a project level. And I'm going to just hit the tips of the waves on the CAPELYC Compact, because there's actually a whole separate addendum to this. But, you know, the themes, sorry, the needs of the CAPELYC Compact, one of the themes that I heard right day one was, how do we take, how we do business now and scale it up five times, or 20 times in the next five years, or, you know, whatever the number is? And can our systems handle it? And so, what Maggie and her team are looking at is building a much more robust service offering and needing an application that can grow with the department. So, that really, and, for lack of a better term, you know, we term that as a CRM problem, customer relationship management problem. Because what they use currently is not, is not meeting their needs 100%. And they've already gone down a path of trying to fix that problem, didn't end up in the greatest places. So, looking at, probably looking at solving that problem once again. That's the big thing. It all kind of wraps in. And also, again, you'll see the same theme, self-service and providing a great web presence. Well, that's doing business in 2010. I mean, literally, you can't, I don't care if you're a county or a store down the street, all of a sudden, you have to have the ability to give people access to your information. You have to be able to do, do business 24 hours a day, because people don't want to walk in the building or call you up or whatever, they're doing business on their terms. So, that's part of the customer self-service. Just, I threw it out of order, but the remote access is, you'll see that theme also through a lot of conversations. A lot of people want the ability to work at home. We didn't talk much about it, but what happens when, you know, instead of getting an inch, we got 13, 14, 15 inches, and, you know, and what happens with, in that case? You know, people have to be working from home, people have to be working remotely. They're constantly on their BlackBerrys or iPhones or whatever it is, how do they do work? So, that's something.
I have to reject something here, because I'd forget it if I don't. When you talk about remote access, we spoke earlier about assessing and regionalizing assessing services. There's a large component of assessing that can be done by remote access. People could actually work at home. So, you don't really need to have a whole lot of offices for that kind of a function. Just, just, there you go.
Absolutely. Especially they, when you have, you know, cheap laptops, you know, public Wi-Fi, access to, you know, pretty much information anywhere, you literally could be on the road doing your work and never, never step foot in an office.
Open up space in town hall for...
There you go. Opening up space for other people. Right, that's exactly right. CAPELYC Commission, I'm literally, here's, this is the shortest amount of bullets I could use to describe Paul's issue. It's, you know, this virtual data center project, to even bring it up in one bullet is not doing it justice. It's an enormous project. They want to, they want to do this in a transparent way with their constituency. They have not only one customer, they have multiple customers. They've got to serve the towns, they've got to serve the community. And possibly, you know, doing the Service Bureau, which is, they're talking about really, like the kind of, to use a kind of a cliche term, a 21st century kind of organization doing business almost entirely electronically, which is, is not a small project. I mean, that one piece could blot out literally resources of one IT department in, for 10 years. So, we'll talk about how, how we would approach that, that kind of problem. Because just when I got barraged by Paul's staff one day, just from the number of requests that they had, just from the commission alone could fill, you know, a library. So, I think that piece of their, the needs, it literally, it's its own beast. I mean, I can't even do a justice. So, we'll talk about, you know, more about how to approach the problem as opposed to solving the problem specifically for Paul. So, you'll see a lot of similarities here. Other departments, obviously, website, website access, people want to update their own thing. That is pretty much universal across everybody's department. Anybody that has a website wants to be able to manage it. One of the things that people in the department say constantly is, they just don't have the ability to do this. Training's a big thing. We hadn't talked about the training center necessarily, but training and new equipment, new software, new hardware, all of those things have to be kind of laced into, and that's staff time, most of the time. It's, the county's in a very, in a, not such a great position, because it's not big enough to have dedicated training scheduled. But it's too small, it's, it's big enough that it's going to take one of, one of John's resources, you know, a good portion of their day to do training for users. So, you know, you have to be able to balance those two things. And possibly going offsite to the college or wherever else to do sort of hands-on training, that's one, one way of doing it. Or building a training center, which can definitely be costly. If you, if anybody's been over to the CAPELYC Community College, they've got some beautiful training rooms. I mean, the new Baruso building is phenomenal. So, wireless, that came up a few times, being able to access things on the Internet as well as the internal network wirelessly, we talked about that, and I have a way to address that. John talked about it. You know, different applications, some of the departments needed specialty applications, they didn't have them, even though you think they have, there's probably 50 or 60 specialized applications across the county when you look at it. There's facilities, wants one more application to manage their keys, which, you know, that's a perfect example, a little example, but it's exactly what we're talking about. You want to build another software application to do that, or do you try to, you know, join forces with another department that has a similar need? And there's some, you know, smaller things. And document management came up a few times, which is essentially electronic versions of documents. And some of the departments, actually, it's, I think it's, it wasn't these two, but one of them has a, has an audit function where they, I think it's on the next page, but the, I can't remember who it was. But they have the ability to scan in a document, this specific bills, and so they go back to electronic to keep, you know, files and files and files. So, document management becomes a big issue when you talk about...
Is it the registry?
No, it's not the registry.
Health sector, that sounds like.
Who was that?
Health environment. Yeah, they're going to have a lot of bills.
Facility, facility, yeah. It was, they deal with a lot of bills there, and so, it was, it was one of the requests that we heard. Again, CRM throughout, a lot of different people wanted the same exact thing. Remote access, surprisingly, there weren't as many as I thought, people wanting access to work remotely. I want access to the files in the file server, I want access to my specific machine, you know, different, different versions of the same theme. And, but those, those came up again and again and again, when you had conversations with people, you know, the concept of a dedicated server, and I said, that means one more server into the pile, so.
Getting back to CRM, one of the things that, looking at development of CRM systems, the amount of FAQs are pretty similar across, across all of them.
Yeah, we have one, I'll show you. Yeah, yeah. It's actually, CRM, that's one of the reasons why I like, while it's, in some ways, it's a buzzword, it's also, it's a good catch-all for all, there's already a very defined set of software out there, because the business problem exists, whether you're running a county, or whether you're running a services organization, or, you know, a Fortune 500 company. You basically have very similar, very similar themes. So, okay, so, some best practices, and again, these are going from, best practices across the IT industry as well as organizations of similar size. So, one way to mitigate the problem of the support issue is coming up with service level agreements for each department and each set of applications. So, the, the IT department knows what they're getting into, and the department on the other side knows exactly what they're getting into. So, if Paul says, I'm going to, I mean, we're building this giant data, virtual data warehouse, we need 24/7 support, we need blah, 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 you know, here is what we need from the IT department. Or an external vendor that has to provide this, you know, there's going to be some internal and some external. So, that is more of a, how to set up a good relationship with the department. There's nothing like that right now in, in any of the departments.
Can I ask you one question? So, you see, is that part of the charter? Or is the charter above that? This is more detail.
No, the charter's the, yes. The charter's the guideline, and then these are basically on a, almost on a per department award. It's actually almost on a, on a application.
And is it typical that, say, you know, for Paul's applications, his enormous thing, that John would agree to do like the initial first hours, and then the vendor comes 24 hours later, something like that?
Right, so, frontline support, tier-one support, sometimes they'll take the first call. And if it's, if it gets severe enough, it gets escalated up to tier-two, which could be backfilled by a vendor. If, that's sometimes how they work, yeah?
On the other hand, if you have an on-site vendor, I'm just trying to see if I can understand this, because I really don't understand a lot of this stuff. All right, so, so now we've contracted with an on-site vendor, and CAPELYC Compact has certain needs, and they want, they need certain things to happen and certain capabilities. The commission comes in, very, you know, they have maybe some overlapping issues that are, that are similar, but they also have a data collection that differs from CAPELYC Compact. And the collaborative comes in and says, you know, we're dealing with our people, we have customers, we have, and these are the things we need. So, you bring all of these things together, and you hand them to the vendor, and say, this is, this is what each of these departments need.
Are you saying one vendor, or are you saying...
Or how do we, other server, or however we outsource this? How does that happen?
Depends on the application.
Peter, let me try, because I'm going to make sure that I understand this well, is the thing I do. For the CAPELYC Compact, 90% of our work from a data process is done with Honeywell and their BBCS model. They how, they are, they house all of our customer data, all of our invoices, all of our reports. So, but when our system is, we're linked, even though they're, is it a BPCS problem, or is it a Barnstable County problem?
Right.
So, the service level agreement would spell out what, in what instances IT is the first line, county IT is the first line of defense. John would say, eh, eh, check, no.